Right, okay.
We are going to open the meeting of October twenty second. Open session, public meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. And our first appointment is with Mr. Fearbey. Oh, boy.
Oh, yeah, this isn't your usual signing.
Hopefully not disseminating all that or... I just need more paper.
Take a few minutes. We have a ban that will be renewing for the next three years on the ladder truck. That's a separate borrowing that we'll be signing. And then this is the big guy for the highway building. It's gonna be over twenty years. And there's a ton of copies that we have to do for this one, so we'll just dive right in.
Is this yours, maybe? No, you have one.
No, that's yours.
I have two of them.
Okay.
Guess we'll just keep going in the same direction in that way.
Feels like Thanksgiving dinner.
Yeah.
Do we need a motion to do this?
Actually, I have a vote that you'll be doing.
Okay.
For... Yeah, that's for the other loan, this one's fine.
It's not like we can actually say, no, we're not gonna pay for the highway fund.
I just thought we might need something in the record.
Actually, one town has done that.
Really?
Yeah, they were telling me today about it.
That's a really bad idea. I wonder how that affects your borrowing rate.
And we're using the State House note program for this. What's that?
There's nothing on the second page, but...
Thank you.
There's a lot of stickers all over.
No.
Oh, this is where Eloise needs to stamp you away?
Yeah, I'll do it after so that I don't compete.
We got a motion going here, we're good.
I know, but I'm thinking if you ever see one of it.
This is for the clerk in the vote of this selectman. We're now in the four copy range. So... I'll let you read it over.
Do we need to order you more sign here, little arrows?
It's from the clerk. Financially.
It says in bulk.
I think they're all the same, right?
Yeah, looks like it.
Those are all yours. Isn't it unbundling the clerk?
Yes, I'm just gonna get a stamp.
Mm-hmm.
Ellie, this is the epitome of trust there, Mr. Dennis. You just put sheets of paper in front of us and we sign.
This is my raise.
Ah, that was funny. I want my check back.
We have to sign one of these for each year. However, there won't be twenty because they combined some years out in the future.
I did actually read all this. Feels like an mortgage.
It's very lean manufacturing, you know, the process just goes around, doesn't get stuck at any one spot.
Whoops.
We're getting there.
Noticing everybody's handwriting towards the end is getting rather scribbly. You wanna come up and help? Just saying.
Need stamps.
No, they really don't. Only if they keep them on their person. I've seen what happens when one of those goes walkabout.
Really?
Oh, when a stamp goes rogue?
My.
Okay, this one you have to start looking for multiple...
It gives me time to catch up.
This has gotta be like watching peat dry.
How about those Patriots?
It's kinda fun watching the faces you make as you sign them.
Trying to remember how to spell my name as it gets to like the tenth one, I'm like A before R, no.
Don't say that, you messed me up.
Don't forget the O.
That's right. Hyphenate it.
This last batch is for the continuing disclosure. And because we have ten million dollars worth of debt, because we have to include Tahoe, this has to happen every year for the length of the loan. It costs a few thousand dollars a year to do. No more.
Yeah, but now you have to go through and make sure that we bought them all.
Yeah, I'll pop back in, we'll go in her office and seal.
Did you say there was something we needed to vote on, or we could?
Should be in here.
Looked like you needed a copy of the minutes then, too. Is that correct? Or something? I don't know, I thought I read that, maybe that was something else.
Oh, from Eloise, yeah. Yep, this is the one that I let you look at. Hey, I might do it in fifteen.
Well, since we're paying for the town baron, I volunteered all of us to go for a ride about in the town trucks when they plow, just saying.
Oh.
Is that actually fun?
You'll find out.
'Cause I get, I love riding in a fire truck, I'm just not sure about the plowing.
Mm-hmm. They'll pick you up when they do your street. Give you a little toot, come on out.
Kidneys feel it. Hmm, yeah.
See, speak of the devil, speak of the devil and then he walks. I told the ladies I volunteered them all, voluntold them all, that we were all gonna go for a ride in the plows during the winter, Dave.
I think that's a great idea.
Hmm?
You can drive.
All right.
Take a shift.
Yeah. What, and then we put in a request to repave all the roads that we've killed? Yeah. All right, I think we're good, Mr. Dennis.
Okay, I think we just need the vote.
Oh.
Why are we moving?
Just to accept the terms of...
I moved to accept the terms of the town baron loan.
Good enough?
Yeah.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can you give me that as written so I can put that in the minutes?
Yep. Do you want it now, or?
Yeah.
Do you need it right?
We'll need it.
That's our sign, that last one.
All right, Ellie and I will hide in our corner.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Thank you, Eloise.
You're welcome. I'll be there.
All right, next thing on our agenda is to discuss the septic at twenty-three Carter Street. Do you all want to come up, or?
Sure.
Will you bring any fruits and vegetables, I'd check.
Hi, everyone.
So I understand we have failed septic.
No surprise.
No?
So I'll start off, my name's Eric Burkett, I work with Whitewater.
Nice to meet you.
Hi, Eric, I'm Peg. Nice to meet you.
This is Lisa.
Nice to meet you.
Hi, Eric, Judy Alpert.
Oh, Judy, nice to meet you.
My very trusted.
Yep, nice to meet you again.
This is our building inspector and our highway facility superintendent.
Excellent. So the, so recently, Mass D E P required that the library become a public water system. So the biggest challenge with the septic system, and I just wanna be clear, I'm always been a clean water guy, so I have very little knowledge about septic systems. But I do know it's in, within the zone one, which is a hundred feet perimeter around the wellhead. So I don't know where you could put a new septic system if you choose to do so. I'm not even sure how it gets regulated, I think it would be something between the town, town engineer, if you have an engineer, and probably Mass D E P. I don't think they specifically govern the septic system, but they'll have concerns about it because it's near the wellhead. And I think right now, when I met Paul Wheeler out there, it looks like the septic system is upgrading of the existing well. So I don't know what the options are. I read back a little bit in the history, and at one point someone had talked about a tight tank.
Right.
I don't know how big of a tight tank you could put in, and I don't know what the pumping frequency would be. And that would be a reoccurring cost as well, if you put a tight tank in. So, that's about the extent of my knowledge.
I believe the tight tank is part of the A C O P agreement.
Right.
It is mentioned in there as a possibility.
I think, the thinking was that that was our only alternative, given the size, you know, the plot.
Right.
And the building. Which is why, you know, we negotiated with them to put it in the agreement.
Yeah, but something happened, I think it kept, did you be held off on that for a few years?
There was a history, and I, I'm not privy to that, neither, I don't think it's Bob, because we weren't here in the past.
Yeah, when Tom Andrew was here, we did have a conference call with the D E P. And it was discussed, and from my notes, I, they did mention that it's really under the jurisdiction of the Board of Health.
Right.
So I don't know, that's just what I have in my notes, I don't know if, I can't, I can't vouch for that, but anyway, it is, it was apparent that that's our most likely solution would be a tight tank, and I'm not sure.
Okay.
Even if that is...
Do you need to meet with the Board of Health then, to?
Well, we have time to do this.
Okay, right.
Right, and, you know, I think everyone's aware that the real issue is that we wanna renovate a library, but the next round for grant renovation is not until next year.
Twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty.
Okay.
So we can't do that until that point in time. And I think then, you know, we wanna speak to the architect and find out exactly, you know, what, what we need. And I think that the architect most probably is, is more familiar. The person we have is someone who's done small libraries before.
It's really just the first step.
Right.
If, if we can proceed, or not.
Right.
So this was all visited in the past history.
Mm-hmm.
So it's been many years, when I started five years ago, five and a half years ago, we, I started to revisit this as part of the planning process for the library. So every five years, we do a long, long-range plan as, in accordance with the Mass Board of Library Commissioners. We're in the process of doing another one. So the first step was just to meet with the D E P, they became involved back when we tried to renovate the library in two thousand four, five, six. I had the correspondence, I was in touch with the selectman with Tom Andrew, so I just took it from there. So we've been meeting with the D E P, and this was, this agreement came about as part of that. And so if we can satisfy all of these requirements, possibly, we could renovate the building on this site. But that was the problem back in two thousand three, four, five, when they originally were trying to renovate the building, that we ran into these obstacles with the water and septic. So, this is just a revisit, and, you know, technology has changed, so possibly, we could do something.
Might be another solution?
Maybe.
Right. And we were actually very pleased that they agreed to the tight tank, because according to Tom, they had not agreed to that previously.
Previously, yeah, I remember.
Ah, okay, you weren't here?
Yeah. Yep.
So if the grant reservation is twenty twenty, and two years from now brings us to twenty twenty, aren't we like bumping up against timelines?
Well...
Yes.
We are.
So what'll be put in place to make sure that?
Well, even to, you know, at our current location, we're gonna need to resolve this.
Right.
Sooner than later.
But as part of the grant process, you, you would, when you're requesting the monies from the state, part of it is a design and planning grant, and then the second part of it would be if, if you get the grant, it would be a construction grant. But as part of the planning process, you have to look into every possibility. Possibly a new library building, possibly renovating, every, every possibility.
So when do you think that we should kick that off?
Well, the first part of it is with to, to update our long-range plan.
Okay.
So we last did that when I started, five years ago. You do it every five years, and you have to have that in place. So, we'd be looking to form a committee soon, and last time we did a survey of the town, we had some focus groups that met, and we tried to get as much input from people as possible throughout the town. The survey went out to everyone in town. So that's the first step. Everything else that follows is...
Based on that?
Is just a process that they require for the grant.
And I think we had, we had anticipated January as our first meeting date to try to get some people together.
Yeah, to kick off our five-year plan process. But there are, you know, it's all contingent on whether it's just the state has the money as well, so...
Right, well, there, there probably are a lot of contingencies.
Yes, many, many, many hurdles to cross.
And I think, you know, it's not a bad idea to have a Plan B.
Yeah. Right.
Where maybe you're just gonna take care of the septic.
The Plan B, C, D is all part of the process.
Right.
And, so, yeah, it's, we're just taking it one step at a time.
Right.
Right, this is a municipal building, so we're gonna have to, as long as we're gonna keep it open, we're gonna have to do something with it.
We're about to celebrate the ninetieth building anniversary. So the building's been serving the town for ninety years, and, so...
Everybody's invited.
Has it seen its, you know, shelf life. We have many folks that love the building. We have a love-hate with the building because we can see, you know, it has, has its drawbacks, and it's just antiquated, so...
The other thing was that it was, I believe, required to stay a library.
Yes, there's a deed restriction.
Yeah.
So what that means can be, people interpret that differently, I know that Littleton also had a deed restriction in their old library. So, and they were able to build a new library and they... There, I can't, I don't know, Bob, do you specifically recall what they did with the old building?
Not the details, no, but there are many towns, obviously, in Massachusetts, that are in the same boat, the same situation. And some of them have managed, Bolton, our neighbor, as you know, not too many years ago, did a new library. It was a renovation, but it was actually a very large addition. So, there are many towns, we've actually visited some, the trustees and I, just to talk with their trustees and directors and see how, how the process went for them, so... So we know we're not alone. Boyle St., they just did a renovation and it took many years. They had a grant for a new library the exact same year we did, in two thousand three, and that failed.
Yep.
They, you know, their library's even older than ours. But they finally got their renovation done. The building is operating much better, but it was necessary, building repairs, just infrastructure. I think their building's nineteen oh seven, I'm guessing, but it's around that time period. They have a nice history of their library on their website, and if you read it, you could almost substitute for a lot of the same process.
I think the only difference is that both of those places had space.
Right, exactly.
More space than water.
And they have water, they have public water, I mean, they have piped water, so...
They have public water. Yeah.
But I mean, they had space to make an addition.
Yeah, Bolton went from, to...
Yeah.
That was one of the issues when they tried to, they were gonna build a new building. And their first round to renovate, they wanted to add on. The renovation they recently did was not an addition, it was just a renovation of the current building. When they tried to add on, one of the neighbors sued the town, because it's a big historic building and it would have been, yeah, yeah, so, yeah.
I just don't wanna lose sight of what we're talking about tonight, though, which is the septic and... You know, putting all of these other things in front of it may mean that we're doing things in the last minute.
The septic is the first step, yeah.
I think we're, we're aware of that, so I, you know, I would say, you know, we'll, we'll give ourselves a deadline, and... You know, we'll talk about septic design, and I think we need, excuse me, we need, well, first we need to do our five-year plan. I think that that's, that's important, if we want this building, you know, to be a library, and what are people saying in the town? Because I think it might change what we do, you know, it might even change the septic.
I think it's a good idea to reach out to people in the town, too.
Yeah, definitely.
Because, you know, they remember that it's already been talked about and come to town meeting and was shot down, so I just want you...
By not, not very many votes.
Right, but just, you know, I remember.
Yeah, I remember, I remember very well.
Right. Do you two have anything more that you'd like to add, concerns, or?
Well, one concern that I have is if it's not fixed within the two-year timeframe, the building's gonna end up being closed until it is fixed.
Right, no, we're well aware of that.
You know, and if we're gonna wait for a grant, we might run into an issue there as well.
Oh, I don't think we're gonna wait for the grant, I don't think we're gonna have time to wait for the grant.
Okay, well, that was the assumption I got from your conversation, was that you were waiting for a grant to come through?
No, I think what we're talking about is if we renovate the building, and I think that you as the selectman are gonna have to decide, yes, is this a building that we're gonna...
I mean, the septic is something that would be, have to be done regardless.
Right, it needs to be done.
That's part of the process, is the building will, I mean, we will have to deal with those issues before we could ever renovate the building.
Okay, I'm sorry, then my understanding, I thought what you were saying was that you were gonna wait two years to do something with the septic system.
Yeah, we were talking a lot about the grants, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry if we, you know, misconstrue, you know, I mean, we're, we're clearly thinking, we don't wanna close the library, it's, you know, it's a public service.
Yeah.
So we, and I don't think anybody here wants to do that. So I think it's really important that we keep the library open, but I think for us, you know, as the trustees and Bob as the director, we really wanna get a sense of what's going on, you know, with the town. And I don't know, we haven't done any research into tight tanks, and I don't know if people here are familiar with them. You and I are...
A public building really is no place to have a tight tank, you know, every drop of water that is, that is coming into the building ends up in a tight tank. And, you know, you, I'm thinking you're not pumping that thing probably on a monthly or bimonthly basis.
Very limited water use in this building.
Well, you don't have control over that, that's the problem, people coming into a public building.
But I, we've...
Well, we talked about the water usage.
Yeah, 'cause we've, we've researched this.
Yeah, and back when they, they tried formally to do this renovation back in two thousand four, five, they did a water usage analysis, and using thirty, average of thirty-six gallons a day. Now, this agreement calls for like something like five hundred gallons a day, so, thirty-six gallons a day, that's gotta be... I mean, I don't know how much we're using now, we could, we now have a, I believe we have a meter, right?
Have a meter, right.
There's a meter, yeah, so we started recording the meter two months ago when we started doing operations.
Do you have any?
I don't have it with me now, but, you know, we can gather a few months of data and modify that, too.
If we could get that as soon as possible, that would be helpful.
You know, even if you're at the library every day, you could just, we could put a notepad, and you can write it down daily.
Yeah, sure, will do, yeah.
It's probably, we're pumping every thirty days.
The problem is that there's nothing else that we can do in this place, because it's, because we're well, it's so small.
So it'll be a thirty-day average of what we're seeing.
Higher than we would.
Yeah.
But the water usage, I'm just, I mean, it's very low, just to give you some idea, yeah.
All right, I think one of the other things that needs to be looked into is finding an engineer to design a system. We had talked... Um, we had talked a couple of ideas, um, maybe the system doesn't go to the back of the building, maybe it's moved more underneath the parking area and is designed to have vehicles parked on top of it. So that way there, you know, it would take a pumping system to pump it into the tank itself, however, if you're gonna be putting an addition on this building and you do find that you have the room to do the addition, then, you know, you could negate the issue of having a tank in the backside of the building by putting it more to the front where vehicles are parked. So, again, that's something that we can ask an engineer and get them on board and, and have them really look into the system and what would be best for the building and future needs and so forth.
So it might be a matter of, um, looking into an engineer and.
There's a few local that are around here, you know.
Right. Ross and Associates, is that an engineer?
Yeah, it's Cornerstone, there's uh Waterman and Design, which is right in Westboro.
Okay.
You know, so there's, there's a few that are around here that can, that work on these types of systems.
I have a few, I have a few that I can send to you also.
Yeah, that would be good, too.
That do strictly water and wastewater.
Okay, so that would be good, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One of the things that the DEP also monitored was the building usage, so we collect statistics on how many people are using the building. And uh, they have very specific numbers that they look at, um, to kick in the public water supply.
Hmm. Do they, do they, uh, when you look at the numbers that use the building, do they look at your square footage and say, you need more, you need, this is adequate, do that kinda thing, or no?
Yeah, well, when, in, in terms of doing a renovation.
Yeah.
Yeah, they look at how much increase is gonna be.
Right.
Right, and then how much more water usage, et cetera, so.
Okay.
There's a lot more to it than that, but I'm just.
Right, I know. Okay.
But it is definitely, it's a factor, so water usage, uh, you know, usage of the library, and they try to project how much more usage you're going to get. So we're trying to, uh, you know, we know we're gonna get some more usage people in the library, but our library, uh, you know, we don't have a lot of programs in the library. In fact, we have some outside because we really don't have the space, um, so we don't have a lot of people all in the library all at once, uh, at one time. So, uh, the majority of people come in, they pick up their book, they might stop and chat.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we have book clubs, we have some programs, children's programs in the library, but it's, it's limited.
Okay.
Uh, they look at how much is that going to expand.
And any expansion that we're going to do, that we've discussed, is, is very limited.
Right.
Um, when we spoke to the DEP about this, they said, well, as long as you do, what, what was the term they used?
Right, we, well, we, the, one of the conceptual plans we had was to go out thirteen feet in the back.
Right.
It was the only way to accommodate, to, to make the building fully accessible, more functional.
And that's really our issue.
And they considered that more in the spirit of a renovation as opposed to a actual addition, even though we would be adding on.
Yes. Mm-hmm.
Because within the current footprint, uh, we could make it fully accessible, we could have the two bathrooms accessible, but we wouldn't have any space for the, for the staff to actually work, so. So that was something that they, they thought that they could accommodate.
Okay, do you have any questions?
So when do you think that your long-range plan will be done, 'cause you said that was the first step?
Uh, it has to be done in twenty nineteen, so, by the end of twenty nineteen.
Okay. And can you get a survey out to the town prior, or do you need to wait?
Yeah, I mean, part of the process, and again, a lot, towns approach the long-range planning, uh, in different ways. Uh, there are people who can come in and facilitate it, we had someone from the Mass Library System come the last time and, and meet with us, so, um, a survey's generally a part of it. Um, so I assume we'll, we'll be doing another survey, it went out to everybody in town the last time. If you go on our website, you can see the results of it, you can see all the comments that were made about, uh, see how many people took it, see how many, see what their comments were. And you can see how they, um, responded to each question. And one of them did have to do, would, would you favor renovation of the current building? And uh, we got a, a majority response saying that they would renovate, they would prefer to see the building renovated on its current site.
How many responses did you get?
Uh, we got a hundred and fifty responses.
Which actually, statistically, they were saying that was very good.
That's, that's what I was asking, because statistically, that's not a bad number.
Yeah. Yeah, we work closely with the Mass Library System, 'cause they do have people there to help, and they have workshops on long-term plans and so forth. So it was the first time I've done it, obviously, I've been a public library director only for five years. Previously had another library life in law libraries, but, um, so, I feel a little more prepared this time, but yeah, there's a, you can hire people that will come in and do the, uh, program for you, so we're, we're still in this process of discussing it. And if anyone's interested in being on our long-range planning committee.
Please join our committee, we invite you.
You're welcome to, uh, to, to come and give your, uh, feedback.
Well, let's know how we can help, and I'm sure the Board of Health will help as well.
Yeah.
Paul, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, I apologize, I'm late, I wasn't aware of the time change on the meeting, but, um, has there been any conversation about the lot next to the library? In terms of, because I believe it's an, um, out-of-town owner, and the possibility of procuring that land to help mitigate this whole situation?
Which lot, you're talking about the house?
Between the library and Steve Quills, there's an additional lot that he does not own.
Quinn.
I don't know if it's currently available, is it?
Well, I, I guess what I'm asking is, has anybody asked?
Well, is this the lot that there had?
There was some talk of that in the last.
In the past, there was a lot that was available, and I'm not quite sure what, it was sold to someone else, or?
What I've been told, and I can't vouch for this as being totally accurate, but, was that they looked into per- uh, purchasing the lot, uh, because they were hoping to get a hundred-foot radius.
Right.
Uh, but it turned out that, uh, it was still, it would've been too close to the neighbor's septic.
Yes, right.
But I, like I said, that, that's just what.
So there may be an opportunity there, it just needs to be, uh, re-earored and have a conversation.
Yeah.
Did you guys have anything else you wanted to add?
Uh, no, but I think that's a viable option to look into that property next door.
The, the issue of the neighbor's septic may still be the same issue.
Possibly, but you would, you would gain extra space.
Oh, no, I, I understand, but if that was our obstacle in the past, we should, I guess, find out from the neighbor where their septic is, if it has changed. I don't know if the regulations have changed at all.
That, that's part of usually the engineering plan. I mean, one of the next steps as far as the Board of Health is concerned, is that the, um, say, the library would go out and engage a septic engineer, and they come in and they lay it all out, they look at all the options, they look at where the neighbor's septic, septic is, wells are, and they plot it all out, and they come back and they present it to you with kinda how you can go forward, and then they approach us with, we could almost meet this variance, or we could almost do that, but we need a variance of, you know, because we're ninety-five feet from the well versus the hundred. And then the board has to look at all that in the best interest of the town, decide what variance is we granting. Sorry. So, but I think, am I wrong, is that, that's the next step?
We do have a site survey that was done in, uh, two thousand four.
Do we need conservation in the, in the discussion at all?
In terms of septic, that's a long time ago.
I think that's a little premature right now if we did.
Okay.
I think.
In terms of septic, if it was two thousand four, that's a long time ago. I would not rely on that.
The owner of the adjacent lot donates into the town, we'll name something after him.
Exactly.
How about the septic system?
I guess, am I wrong?
We'll give him a brick.
Yeah, right. Am I wrong in thinking that they would wanna have this ready and a plan ready for this septic for town meeting? Because that's not something, the, the numbers I've heard, that's not something that we approve. So that would have to go probably to town meeting, so you would wanna think about your timing in regards to.
Right.
The project in that way.
Most likely the, you, you're talking about this next day, town meeting?
Well, yeah.
Because then they'd have to have something for February, or whenever the warrant is open.
Oh, I don't know that we're gonna be able to do February, that's gonna be tough.
Okay, I'm just looking at, I mean, the, the numbers I've heard are in the hundred, thousand-dollar range.
Yeah, no, I. I have no idea.
So, um, this is not an insignificant sort of.
Do you folks?
Well, in terms of leading this project, like, in terms of the septic, who, who is doing that?
Right, who, who's responsibility is that?
For?
For taking, for taking the role to lead this project, you know, is it something that facilities does, is it something that we do?
I think it would be the library that would bring, put an article on the warrant, is that what you're asking?
Well, I guess I'm, I'm asking, who, who manages this? You know, who manages contacting everyone, is it the Board of Health?
Are you asking, are you asking who reaches out to the engineer to get the engineer on board?
Yes, who, who does, who, who does all the nitty-gritty work?
Who puts like a project plan timeline together?
Yeah, who's the project manager?
It's a town building.
It's a town bill, it's a municipal building, so I'm not sure the trustees should be the, or, or Bob as the director should be responsible for, for doing that. I think that that's a public facilities issue.
Mm-hmm.
So then.
We've got a subcommittee getting together, don't we?
I think we need to act, I think we need to act quickly, though, if we're gonna put something on the, you know, get the warrant.
Yeah, if you're talking about this coming.
May, maybe something that we look into before getting a committee together, that we just reach out and start getting an engineer, maybe making a call tomorrow or the next day.
Right, right.
See if we can talk to somebody, get some ideas or some quotes from three or four individuals, and start working along that process to figure out, you know, ballpark, where are we at? How much is this gonna cost?
Right.
Um, and the different options, because we have to go to town meeting with something, we need to know what we're looking at, and it's meeting with as many engineers and their ideas as possible, so that we can have something viable to go to town meeting, so that when the weather's good, we can put in a new system.
Mm-hmm.
But we, we don't have a town standing building committee, and sometimes do, but we don't. Uh, but we do have, uh, in the capital planning committee in the DOR guidelines, it calls for the capital planning committee to keep track of the buildings, um, do a, a capital improvement plan, and to do five-year budgeting plans, but also to assist the town in, in, uh, the, the scheduling of these projects. And so there are some resources on the capital planning committee that could assist you perhaps with the, the facilities manager, uh, to put some things, to get early things together, enough to get a, uh, at least a conceptual plan of what this, uh, uh, septic system might look like, by a professional engineer. And I guess the question I have, do you have funding for?
That's why we'd have to go to the May town meeting.
Well, you still have to pay.
For the engineer?
Yeah, we have to pay for the engineer. This for free either, so.
That's not gonna be for free, but it's, you know, there, there was a, a number, I think you picked around last year of twenty-five thousand, but that was for the well.
That was for the well.
So.
Possible for the well.
Possi- possibility.
As far as funding for the design, or preliminary design, it might be five, ten thousand, something like that, I don't know.
I don't, I don't, I mean, I don't know until we start putting out phone calls and asking people just how much is it gonna cost us to get out there.
Yeah. You want, if we're gonna go ahead and do, get some estimates on the cost of that, that'd be a good first step.
I think, I, ideally, what we would wanna do is, is get some estimates on how much the cost is gonna be. One, to get the engineer on board to do the design, and two, to have the system installed, um, but on top of just that, um, we, we need to also figure out, um, what is the cost of putting in the system itself, not just designing the system and its location.
Right.
So, and that would be a separate contractor that would do that anyway, septic installer that would come in and put that in, so. And then, of course, whatever route we decide to go, and then, um, doing a water consumption study and so forth, to make sure that the tank is sized accordingly, so that when we put it in, you know, we pumping it once a month or every two months or whatever, so it, it depends. You know, if you put a fifteen-hundred gallon tank and you're using a hundred, a hundred gallons a day, that's every fifteen days you're pumping the tank, so, those are things to consider.
So first step is to get quotes on what it's gonna cost to, to grow the design.
We may end up putting a tight tank in just for a temporary solution to keep the building open, until some kind of permanent funding can come down the road to, to correct the problem long-term.
Right.
Uh, do you mind doing the phone calling?
No, I'll do, I'll try to get somebody in, you know, throw some numbers around.
Yeah, and throw, throw some numbers our way so we know.
Yep.
Okay?
And, you know, you know, reach out to capital planning, too, if you want, yeah.
We wanna meet again.
Joe volunteered to help me.
Do you, uh, why don't you stay in touch with us, let us know the next time when you have information and wanna come back and share it?
Yep.
That'd be great.
Joe and Dave, in your, in your professional opinion, given the timing, do you see a path forward for uninterrupted service?
Depends on the size of the system, and if it's a permanent, you know, if the tight tank, a permanent tight tank is, you know, what Joe said, you're probably gonna look at a fifteen-hundred gallon tank. You know, that's a sizable project, as opposed to if we, if it's a temporary thing, we put in a, a five-hundred gallon or eight-hundred gallon tank or something just to get us by for a few years.
But Dave, would we need that large a tank if we're not really increasing our usage, our water usage?
Well, part of your usage is actually designed on, you know, if you're gonna put an addition on the building.
Well, it's a renovation, remember, it's only thirteen hundreds, you know, square feet.
But even if it's thirteen hundred square feet, when we design buildings and, and I go to give you an occupancy for the building, I determine your occupant load based off of the square footage and how many occupants you can carry. If all of a sudden your occupant load is, say, a hundred people, right, that determines how many, uh, labs you have, how many toilets you need, how many urinals you need, things like that, how much needs to be accessible, all that plays into it, so depending, you know, and it's, it's not based, it, it's based on full capacity. So you're having an event there, you have a hundred people there, how many people are using the toilet, and, and how much water's being used, so it's always at the peak. Nothing's ever designed for the lowest portion, so.
And, and that's something we discussed with the DEP, actually, because we're not increasing the number of bathrooms.
Okay. Right, you may not have to, but you may increase your occupant load, which is more usage anyway.
Um, I think that's gonna be minimal, given what we, but we, we won't know, you're right, we won't, we won't know.
Well, it's hypothetical until we.
No, I don't think you will know.
You know, a fifteen-hundred tank, fifteen-hundred gallon tank divided by fifty gallons a day is thirty days.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean.
So, and what the cost of that would look like also.
Right, what, well, that's, right, that's one of the other things we have to consider, sure the long-range costs.
Right.
If you're gonna pump it before you get close to a hundred percent, because the consequences of failure are dramatic.
Yeah.
Oh, sure.
So why don't we, why don't we?
Let's start.
Wait until you get some information?
Right.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, get back in touch with us and we can meet again?
Yes.
Sound good?
Sounds good.
All right, thank you.
Great, thanks for coming out lovely.
Just keep us all in the loop.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Okay.
All right.
We're dismissed.
Thanks, guys.
You are dismissed.
Thank you.
So I have a question for you, Erica.
Sure.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. All right, we're moving on to the FinCom and the FY twenty budgeting and finance preview.
Oh, hello, folks.
I'll try and keep this brief as much as possible. I promised not to talk about any toilets, I don't think we have any in budget right now, at least that we have to deal with. Don't tell me that, I don't wanna, tell me that at a future meeting.
Well, there might be, but you don't have to deal with it, you're right. Keep the people on the other side of the table, at least at this point.
There you go. All right, well, we're all here today.
Nice to meet you. I'm Peg, nice to meet you.
Have you met? Yeah.
Do you have a mobile stand? Oh, they have.
They all have, yeah, but I was way ahead of you on that one. All righty, so, uh, duh, 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 duh. I have to go put Scott on a ringer and run him through it and see what pops out, 'cause I asked him, okay, do you have a, do you have a list of, like, a schedule for when things need to be done? He said, oh, no, we just knew.
We just knew.
I said, okay, that's helpful. However, we did, we did confirm the important numbers in, uh, in the letter today in the sense of what the new levy number would be, a two-and-a-half percent, what the leftover new growth, the sort of excess new growth, bonus new growth from last year from this year's perspective is. We are, until Molly can get us new growth numbers for FY twenty, we're going with the same conservative hundred-thousand-dollar estimate that we went with last year. It will, it will likely be more than that, but Molly is not in a position to give us that number at this time.
Okay.
And I broke out my calculator just to make sure the bottom box is what the top three boxes say, and it is, so we're.
Good.
Conservative estimate of what we'll have in terms of additional funds, um, for FY twenty increases is six hundred and forty-eight thousand and change.
Mm-hmm.
Um, this is not an encouragement to use all of that, of course, that's just the, the estimate of what we expect to have available. Last year, we had about five hundred thousand available, and we got eight hundred thousand in new spending, um, and we had to cut a lot for the first time in my, my. And we had to cut a lot for the first time in my, my over six years on the finance committee. We'll do that again if we have to, I mean, it's our job, but, you know, if we didn't have to, that would really be okay, we wouldn't frown on that. Um, an overall thing to keep in mind before I go through this too, is that we want to put as much money into stabilization as we can, uh, this year, so.
You know what is in stabilization at this point?
I don't have that number off the top of my head, but I know I wanted to put two fifty in it last year, we were only able to put in about fifty thousand, that is to say.
Yeah.
Um, so.
It's a little over, over five hundred thousand, is it, five forty-nine?
No, that's not, that's not what's in stabilization, it's higher than that.
Oh, yes.
I was gonna say, if that's the number, then we're in big trouble. Let's not speculate, I'll find out.
I have it in my bag.
I have it in my bag, yeah.
The money?
Wow, he fits right in.
No. Okay, I will, I will find out what's in stabilization.
It was in the attachment to this.
What is the guideline, is it, um, a certain percentage of the budget is a good idea to keep in stabilization?
The state does have guidelines and we're.
The state has guidelines.
And I forget what that is, if it's.
I'll have to take a look.
What is it?
About five percent.
That's what I thought.
What was it?
Five percent?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and right now, the annual, the annual budget from last year was a bit over twelve million, and my, there's more than a million in stabilization, uh, but I don't know the exact number off the top of my head, I'll look it up. However, um, the state guideline is not necessarily what we would want to do. You know, we know we've had, we've had economic growth steadily for the past X number of years, but that, at some point, there will be a recession, and we will need to draw from stabilization, and I wanna make sure that at that time, it is there to support what we need, so. So, that is to say, let's try to put as much in there as we can, I'm not asking for a number at this point. Um, Lisa was kind enough to point out that the COLA percentages on here, uh, need to be recalculated, so we'll be looking at that. I do wanna point out though that, um, COLA, cost of living adjustments ensure that employee salaries remain in real dollars, what they have been, otherwise you're giving people a pay cut, I mean, private industry does that, many of them on a regular basis, but that, that is what happens, and I don't think the public sector should be emulating that. Um, I'm not saying the COLA should be as high as it was last year, but if there wasn't one, I don't think that's fair, in my opinion. So, I just wanted to share that with you, I'll be happy to talk to personnel.
We'll be hearing, yeah, we'll be hearing from personnel, I believe, next Monday.
Next week.
Yeah.
Quarter to seven.
That sounds good. Um, health insurance has changed with the, um, consolidation of Berlin Memorial School into the joint school district. You will see, um, those, the expense for health insurance in our budget will go down, however, the expenses are just shifting place in the budget, that's gonna go back around and show up in the budget for Tejano.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and we don't know, I talked with Dennis about it today, and our suspicion is when it comes around the corner, it will be higher, but we'll find out, we don't know yet. Um, so, we're not as concerned about that total number in that line item right now, but you should bear in mind that it will look like a bonus and a, and a gift, and in fact, it's showing up, it's just gonna be in a different place.
Mm-hmm.
Um, fire and rescue schools, not too concerned about those at the moment. Um, retirement funding, I've asked Dennis to get me copies of the reports from Worcester County Retirement, 'cause they could be fine, they could be in good fiscal health and be all prepped up to, um, meet our obligations, but I wanna make sure during my time as chair of the finance committee that they are, as best we can determine that.
Okay.
They are managed by, Dennis gave me the acronym, and it starts with a P, that's what I can tell you at the moment.
It's down, it's gonna cut it down to at least one twenty-fifth of everything else.
It does.
Do you have a, a timeframe to get that back from Dennis?
Uh, he is hunting up their reports for me, and he's gonna give it to me in the next week or two.
Nice.
Um, but I, this is gonna be more than just looking at their reports, I wanna check and see what, I wanna establish in the interest of the town of Berlin, if the state is doing a good job in our judgment of me, of monitoring the fiscal health of the Worcester County Retirement Fund. 'Cause I don't want us, one of these years, when we may or may not still be here, but I don't want our successors to get a big surprise in the mail or in our email that says, oh, whoops.
Sorry.
Like the state of Illinois, like the state of California, like some other places, we haven't done a good job. And I, I was speaking to some of my colleagues earlier today, and I said, um, pensions are a lot like water and sewer systems, since they're not clearly visible to the public and politicians don't get their names on them, we don't necessarily do the best job of auditing them. I'm glad I'm amusing, Mike, I mean, it is kind of amusing, but I, I do wanna take a look at that and make sure that, that as best we can tell, that it's, it's in good shape, 'cause it's a black box to us right now, and it's a significant liability. Happily, that doesn't have anything to do with this year's budget. Uh, you know about CPA, I told you about stabilization. Item eight, that turns out that, um, the town HVAC systems, there are a number of them, it turns out at this point, that were rated for fifteen years of life, that are now twenty years old, um, and those are going on to, we just started the capital planning committee recently, one of their jobs, and the jobs of those that are helping them is to go around and poke their fingers into anthills and see where there are things that need to be on, on the list for replacement, so now he has more things on the list for replacement.
Can you mean to add to the list?
We do, yes.
I, I wouldn't say like pointing in anthills, it's uncovering the truth, if you will.
Yes, poking, I said, not pointing.
Collecting some, collecting some data.
We are gradually.
Our old buildings.
Finding more and more things that need to be on the, the list of capital items to replace.
And there are some good things happening, the energy committee is working hard, again, getting some data and, uh, some, looking at those capital plants, and whether there's any redundancy in them, and, uh, how, their life, how old they are, what the replacement plan might be for each building, and I think that's a s- big step in the right direction.
This is not me trying to throw you under the bus, I, I apologize if it felt that way, this is me saying, we're still learning, i- if there's gonna be a three to five year, I would bet, learning curve, since we have not had a capital plan for the town in living memory that has accounted for everything, of making sure that we have everything on the list that's gonna be deeply replaced and be aware of how we're gonna finance it.
So, what's the impact of Sears bankruptcy on the town?
Well, you know.
Ish?
Hmm, it's, they're, they're, they're gonna, well, the nice thing about the, the way they filed bankruptcy right now is they're gonna be paying their, their ta- their, uh, property taxes on an interim basis during the bankruptcy proceedings.
Is that future or just past, as I read it, it looked like past.
I don't, yeah, probably it's past.
Who owns the building?
So, well, there, hold, can you hold on just a second? There are two buildings in question with the Sears bankruptcy, okay, one of them's owned by the mall, and one of them is owned by Sears. Happily, the one owned by the mall, uh, Solomon, the, what's the name of the company that manages Solomon Pond Mall?
Yeah.
Simon malls, they pay us the property taxes on that space, it's up to them to collect rent on it, right? They owe us whether there's an occupant in there or not.
Mm-hmm.
Now, that may make them very unhappy, and I wouldn't blame them, but, um, so that building's not as big a question. It's the Sears Automotive Building.
Standalone?
Yeah, Sears owns that, and that's the one where they pay us directly. It turns out evidently the mall doesn't, according to Dennis, the mall doesn't own that building, Sears owns that building.
Okay.
So, that's, I don't know what percentage of Sears' taxes that is, Dennis is looking that up right now, and he's gonna let you know. Hmm?
I'm sorry, did you say, is he still here?
No, he's gone home, but we talked about it just before this meeting, and he's gonna look it up and let us know.
And Molly would have the numbers of what we get from Sears currently.
Right. I mean, I, yeah, we'll see, yeah. I mean, I'm told.
I think it's a wait and see sort of thing.
Yeah, I'm told secondhand that, um, the Economic Development Committee has spoken with Simon, the, the managers of Solomon Pond Mall, and that what, the words that's come back from them is that when they have lost a Sears or a Pennies or a Macy's in malls that they managed, that they have been able to replace those anchor tenants as long as the overall mall has good traffic. And, does this one have good traffic? I don't know, I don't know.
Depends when you go around Christmas, you can't get down the road.
Of course it does, I know that, yeah, I don't know, uh, I've only heard this secondhand, so I'm just telling you what, what I've been told. I'm gonna speak to them directly and see what I can find out.
All right, let's get back to the town.
Yep.
Yeah. Is there anything else that you'd like to share with us?
Um, I'm gonna take a look at last year's budget to see where that eight hundred thousand in expenses versus five hundred in available, uh, additional funding, where that was coming from. Uh, I know what we had to cut, but that wasn't, what we had to cut wasn't necessarily what was the source of the overage, if that makes sense, right?
Okay.
So, I'll find out, and I'll let you know, I haven't done that yet.
And one of our questions for you is, do you wanna have a budget kickoff?
What, you mean like a barbecue?
Yes.
No, go ahead.
So, we're getting ready.
We've had a budget kickoff in the past, not recently.
Yep.
But, um, June wanted to know.
Uh-huh.
Whether, as she gets her information collated and ready to disseminate, do we wanna have a budget kickoff meeting? Do you have a message that you'd like to give to the departments?
I think setting expectations is important, 'cause I think part of what happened last year was, expectations were not set of how much you were looking for, or what the, you know.
I would be happy to do that, because I would, I would like to.
Setting expectations would be helpful, 'cause then, when they don't meet them, then it's easier to say, but I set appropriate expectations.
Yes. Yep. Right.
One, one of the questions I know that came up was on capital, well, how much is the capital budget? And when we started last year, we, we didn't know, uh, the requests came in at two point five million, and we felt like the previous year, we had spent around a million, uh, through the finance committee, and, but we, there was no capital planning committee, so we said, we said, well, our target is to get it down to a million this year, and then we, if you remember that bar chart, we move things into this year and next year and so forth, and we, we would like to have a level, we don't, we only have that one year of data so far, if you will.
Well, they, they were basing it on the, I don't know if it was the amount that was spent in a specific year, but that, of course, may need to be updated.
Yes, yes.
Whether it was two thousand and ten or two thousand and one or something, I can't remember.
We, we looked at the previous year's capital items, and you have to go back to the warrant and.
You'd probably have to go back and look a couple of years in order to see what it was based on previously.
And, and now, so now that we have a year's data, it'll be much easier, it'll probably be something more than a million, but not, not sure.
So, the answer to your question is yes.
You'd like to do that?
Yes, and we'll, we'll come with both capital planning and finance, and I'll give them a number that we'd like to shoot for.
Was it Ju- was it November fifteenth that, uh?
She was targeting?
That June was targeting?
For?
For a budget kickoff, I think there was an email to that effect.
When's the fifteenth?
What day of the week, you mean?
On the calendar, yeah.
Wednesday.
Hmm?
I think it's a Wednesday.
Hmm.
Thursday.
It's a Thursday.
Okay.
So, like, two weeks with one, three?
Well, she didn't, she isn't as good as.
One, three weeks from now, ish, one, two, three, four weeks.
She wanted to share the budget packages to all departments on November ninth.
Okay.
Um.
Oh, that's a Friday.
And, why do we have, I have the fifteenth.
Yeah, it's a sense for them to have it first, and then.
But then she also wrote there, November ninth with no kickoff meeting, I don't know what that means.
Well, she wanted us to ask the FinCom.
If there is, one.
Um, and for some reason, I have the fifteenth written right here.
Well, maybe she means mailing out the packages or getting the packages to.
Why don't we check, when is June back from her cruise?
Monday.
Okay, why don't we check in, why don't we check in with June on Monday, on Monday, Tuesday and find out?
I'll double check with her.
But the answer anyways, yes, and we'll, we'll bring capital planning as well as finance, and we'll let them know.
Okay.
Particularly in light of what we'd like to put in stabilization, sort of what the, what the expectation is.
Okay.
Well, when you're looking at the budget, I know as part of this year, the personnel evaluations that we've tried to put in, like, goal setting and potential training for people, so I don't know if you could make a recommendation to say, it's two percent of your budget, it's flat.
You mean for training or for raises, or for?
Training, training, so if I'm a, if I'm a Amy and I wanna be a June, what do I need to get there? Oh, you need to take this and this and this, well, that would be part of my development plan, so, but where is that money gonna come from for me to take wink and blink and a nod? So, I didn't know if there's something that you could recommend as people are putting budgets together to say, look at, ish.
Sitting here this moment, I don't have an answer for that, but I'll take a look.
And that's fine, that's fine, but yeah.
Sure.
'Cause I don't want people to come back and say, oh, well, I'm gonna forecast twenty thousand dollars for training, and you're like, yeah, I'll give you a dollar fifty, yeah. Again, going back to Lisa's point, I just want expectations to be real.
Yep, okay.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Anything else?
Anything else?
Anything else from you guys? No? Okay.
No, we still got fish to go fry in the other room.
All right.
Yep.
All right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You're having fish, you sure they had dinner before you came?
I didn't know that, I'd have been.
Obviously, I have dinner on my mind, don't mind me.
Just a quick, I was at a, um, a conference this weekend, and, um, they gave a legislative update, and if we do pass Community Preservation Act, they, um, had extra money to add on to the budget this year, and like, ten million of that went to.
Additional matching funds?
Preservation Act matching funds.
Yeah. I know that the Community Preservation Coalition has been lobbying the legislature to increase the matching funds, because as more communities have joined, the amount of matching funds has gone down, but.
So, it went, so, there is, there is a million additional.
Good, okay, ah, there's something else I was gonna ask you guys about. If it's important, it'll come back to me, I have learned that, my father told me that.
And you can always put it in an email.
Oh, you guys need more email, absolutely.
At any time, at the, at any time of day.
Yeah, oh, no, I'm not doing that.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Got it.
No, I'm not doing that.
Couple more.
All righty, thank you, we'll be in touch.
Thank you. Three is the right number.
All right.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Ashley, come on up.
Next contestant on Visit with the Selectmen.
Busy agenda today, huh?
Little bit.
Yeah, all right.
All right, so, we've got more paperwork to sign on the Oberg.
Right, yeah, so this'll be the last bit of this project, thank goodness.
You promised.
Yeah, I am, I swear, I mean, um, we had the ribbon cutting last week, and that went well, and, um, I think everybody was happy about that, so, this is i- it, um, you sign, I take it, I get it to the EEA, um, uh, secretary, and, and then we'll record, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think you have the copy, the original to sign, um.
Is it in here?
Stand by to notarize it.
Perfect, and, um, if you have any questions at all, I'm here to answer. I think this is, this particular CR pretty much follows the state model almost exactly, we didn't stray, it's pretty straightforward, and, um, there hasn't been any sort of, uh, agreement in terms of management of the property yet, I think that the Conservation Commission's still deciding how they wanna handle that, um, but we're here to help, if they want some help with management, and, um.
All right, and here's the signature page, perfect, so. Is there a motion for this that we need to, uh, make?
Move to.
Sign the document?
Final document for the Oberg property.
Seconded, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yay.
Yay.
This was a long slog, this one. Let me just pass that to you, and then we'll pass it down this way, and, and I'll put it all back together.
All right. All righty. Yeah, it was really nice that, um, Louise Jonda had, I think it's her niece that works for Worcester News Tonight, or, um, and she had her come out to the ribbon cutting, so there was a little, um, special on Worcester News Tonight on it, and it was, she was, it was really nicely done, she did a great job.
You saw her?
Yeah, Jam was.
Yeah.
Nice.
All right, now, do you want her to send you a copy, or?
Well, we're gonna have Eloise notarizing, I'll just take a copy.
All right. All right.
All right, awesome, so I'll bring that back to Eloise. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everything's done.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you, for all your support.
All right.
Thanks for stamping, Eloise.
I did it last Wednesday for the conservation, so I knew it was coming in my office.
Oh, sure.
All right, um. No meeting minutes, correct?
No. No.
Um, update on appointments, Earthworks Board, Town Office Space Study Advisory Committee. Um, the reason I put the Earthworks Board on here is that I just wondered whether you wanted to go over who, who we'd like to ask to be on Earthworks Board.
Didn't we have defined?
Did we?
In the, I thought it was in the thing that we didn't put on there that it was defined. I know the building inspector was one, in the, the bylaw, yeah.
In the, uh, bylaw? I didn't have anything in, in notes, but it could be very well that we did discuss it.
Yep, I'm pretty sure it was specified. All right, a happy dream that it was specified, which is possible.
Go Mary, go Mary. Really? It would've been a happy dream if it, they were appointed.
Building Inspector, Representative of the Conservation Commission, a Representative of the Board of Health and two representatives appointed by the Selectmen for one-year terms.
All right.
So you want me to ask all those boards the board names?
Yes, please.
And then we need two other victims, is what it sounds like?
Right.
Um, yeah.
You wanna advertise for that?
And I would assume maybe someone, yeah, I mean, you might as well put the word out, but you know, if we have anybody in mind, you might wanna encourage them to put their name in. All right.
Maybe, yeah. Maybe Joe knows somebody in town or Paul knows somebody in town too that has that kind of background.
Well, do we, I mean, yeah. I'm not really sure about, that might be helpful, just getting some feedback um on that. Um, and then the other thing was the uh Town Office Space Study Advisory Committee. Um, have we gotten all of those slots filled? No? What are we missing?
No.
Do you know?
I don't really think anyone's responded.
Uh, planning board probably.
Yeah, I don't think the planning board's responded.
Um.
We saw something come through, but I can't remember.
Um, the Highway Superintendent said he, he would.
Dave.
Yeah.
Yeah, you almost have to have him, that's kind of.
Yeah. Oh, we should've asked um capital planning.
They're still out, well, Dave's still out there.
The building inspector and then we were thinking of an employee.
Two.
Two, I thought, two town employees.
Honey, could you go um just ask Dave if capital planning can provide us with a volunteer for the um.
Actually, we have a.
They're, they're actually looking at the buildings and stuff, but a volunteer for that committee.
Tom?
What's that?
Did Tom put his name in? Do you have that?
Yeah, he did, he did.
Yes, okay, so that's an employee.
Okay. All right, so that's one.
Mm-hmm. I just didn't know if we were ready for appointments or not, that's why it was here. Keep it, keep this thing moving.
Yeah, we definitely need to keep it moving.
And we also.
Well, I guess on your side, you could make your appointments.
Yes. Do you?
Which is one, the employee, right?
Well, how, how have we advertised that in the past? Have we done?
I sent it to, I sent this out, let me see here.
All the department heads.
All.
Yeah, update, I sent that on Friday.
That's right.
They seek to im- impanel a five-member, okay, so that would be Dave Smith, Joe Achu, Representative of Capital Planning, which they didn't answer. Planning Board didn't answer and a town employee, and I do believe you're right, I think, I think Tom Galvin did answer that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Uh, oh, actually George Penegas also said he would like to volunteer and Chief Galvin.
As I. Oh, that's right.
All right, so then there's your two.
Oh.
George would be wearing two hats, I guess, council on aging and cemetery, whereas Chief Galvin is all-powerful and everywhere.
Well, he's po- he police and data systems.
There you go.
Um.
Well, it's nice, cause then you probably have two of the bigger chunks that are taken care of.
So we really.
But then that would make it a six-member committee if you put them both on, cause you're only looking for one town committee, uh one town employee.
Oh, I thought it said two.
No.
Yeah.
Well, we're still looking for a planning board member also, correct?
Yes.
So.
And if, honestly, if you were gonna choose between the two, because Tom is more familiar with how the people are in the building, you probably wanna go there, but.
Okay, well, we can make that decision that perhaps the next meeting, if we hear from planning board, maybe they need a poke.
I can poke him again.
Poke, poke.
I mean, this is only the first business day since I sent out the poke on Friday, so I don't think they had a chance to meet.
I know. Right. That's true.
To designate somebody.
All right.
They meet what, Wednesday? This Wednesday?
I don't know if they meet.
Planning board does meet Tuesday.
Tues- Tuesday, so tomorrow.
Maybe I can ask if I happen to get there.
He'll get back to you by the end of the week.
All right.
Bye.
Thank you.
All right, uh, well, I think I mentioned in the email I sent to you in regards to the agenda. That I did talk with George about the council on aging van and it looks like uh we should probably try to get a place for it over the winter.
Okay. I meant to ask Dave too, but Joe Spinney, actually, I talked to him at the, Jim, sorry, Jim Spinney.
Jim's Jim?
I talked to him at the open house and his recommendation was at least temporarily to let them go into the old town barn. Um have them just leave the, do it, park it right in the front and leave the keys in there in case they needed to get to the stuff that was in the back at any point. But that was his initial um thought was.
And that's, is, did you happen to talk to Dave about it or?
I haven't, that's why I.
Yeah, well, maybe we could touch base with him, make sure that's a good idea and.
Yeah. But there's not, I mean.
It would be at least something temporary.
Yeah, the feeling was the, the fire, old fire station, it would be really dangerous getting in and out of. Um there isn't space at the new town barn, there isn't, you know.
Yeah, you'd have to move it, you couldn't park it.
Yeah, so.
One of the, one of the things I did hear from, hear about at the open house was that it is difficult getting out from the new highway barn onto Route sixty-two too.
That was about the only thing you had.
Yeah, cause you can't see.
You can't see and the, the people come right up over that hill and.
So do we put a mirror in? A blinky mirror?
I don't know, might end up.
We need a light at the blinky light and we need a light at, at corners and that would solve the problem, but.
A light.
We'll, we'll take, we'll all, we'll all get out there with a sign.
I will hold my breath and peel over, waiting for that.
I know. Okay.
All right. Moving on, letters to the administration for the release of our FY nineteen funding items.
This was from Senator Tran?
Yes, good. For the UTV, um Mary drafted a letter. Did you see the letters? Do you wanna see the letters?
Yeah. That, that.
Just asking for the money to be released.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we each need to sign.
In my garden, I need irrigation system in the community garden.
Oh, I need to sign both of them, I guess, don't I? There you go. Good. Uh, the next thing is the funding request for the holiday light rental. At, in the middle of town. The estimate is fifteen, fifteen hundred and eighty-eight dollars and sixty cents.
You said that comes out of the festive budget, Festivus for the rest of us?
That, it can come out of the festive events budget, yes. Anybody have any comments, questions?
No, as long as there's budget and the money for it, we're not scrounging to find it, I'm fine.
I know everybody does really enjoy the tree.
It is pretty.
Thank you very much.
It is pretty.
Yeah, we're not really in a, we're not really in a position to do it on our own.
Thank you, Eloise, have a good night.
No. I think previously though, I think the fire department did put the lights on the tree.
Was there a cost to that though?
Yeah, I think the problem was more, you know, buying and maintaining that number of lights is really expensive and difficult. I think that was the, the big part of it.
Mm-hmm.
So is this just for the big tree, is it for all the little ones too?
Big tree.
Just the big tree, I believe, and then the little ones.
But they provide all the lights, they put them up, they take them down, they're their lights, they're not our lights. Which means we don't have to deal with pretty much anything where this is concerned. And maybe there's a better long-term solution, but.
Maybe we need to find another tree.
I don't know where we'd even store the lights based on the number of requests for putting things places.
And then, and then who screws and unscrews the budget, wh- the bulb when one goes out to find like the bad one?
Yeah, that's kind of, yeah. And that's a lot, I mean, that's a, that's thousands of lights.
It's a lot of lights.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
When do the lights go up? Ish.
Kindly let us know if you have specific time deadlines for decorations set up and take down.
Okay.
Do we?
Um, the fire department's been handling that, so.
I guess so.
Uh.
Um, they, don't they have Christmas?
Yeah, it's like.
When's Christmas in Berlin?
Christmas in Berlin, um, it's usually like.
The current thing is like that first week.
The first Saturday in December.
So the first first Saturday is the first.
Oh.
So do you go the eighth and then that still gives you two weeks to Xmas and then take them down? Would that be one, two, three, like the fifth, the fifth of January?
Well, they could.
Or leave them up another week, so the twelfth?
Yeah, I think the important thing is when they go up, not necessarily when they go down, cause you just don't turn them on, so.
So they use to the twelfth.
Well, you know, I would, I would say that they might wanna check to see when Christmas in Berlin is, if it's the first or the eighth of December.
Well, it wasn't, that might be hard because it was not formal last year.
I would assume.
Yeah, I haven't seen anything on it.
The businesses just decided to.
No, I know.
Do it, so I don't know that.
It may not be happening, but the church does something, I believe, that first Saturday or Sunday, but anyway, regardless.
Yeah.
Is there a, a longer charge if you um put them up on the first versus the eighth, or does it matter?
I don't think so.
I'm gonna assume this is a flat, since we've already approved what it costs, but.
What's that?
You know, well, I mean. Does it say anything about time on there?
I read it, I didn't see anything about w- when, it's only when you put them up, I believe.
Oh, we can earn elf dollars.
Aren't you doing that already? Why don't we make the fire department deal with this?
Yeah, there's nothing in here, at least so that I can see, that says, we're gonna charge you more if we.
Put it up too early or take it down too late?
Yeah, there's nothing in here.
No, I don't think so.
Is that a question though, before we do the final sign-off, that we just ask and confirm?
I think it's.
They're, they're not using any kind of rush and sometimes if it's snowy and icy, maybe they won't even be able to easily get to it without breaking a tree or getting over a snow pile.
It is what it is. Right.
Okay.
They, they lea- they leave it up for a good, long period of time.
Yeah, they do.
I don't think it's a rush to take it down usually.
No.
Yeah, it just says.
And I think they're usually mindful of trying to do it right around Thanksgiving too, so you're, you're at the beginning of the season. They, they, I think they know the drill.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, all it says is remove decorations at the end of the holiday season.
Yeah.
It's kinda open.
Before spring.
Probably around Thanksgiving and take it down around New Year's, that's my guess.
Okay, alrighty. As long as there's a budget, I'm okay signing it. There you go.
I think that's it, just one signature, correct?
Yeah, sure, make me responsible for it, yeah, nice.
Yep, this time it's your turn.
Nice.
All right. All right, um, I had been asked about whether we wanted a policy for things left in the town office common areas or even just a sign. There's, you know, things left for council on aging, maybe the sign, there needs to be some kind of a sign. Um, where they need to leave them rather than in the lobby.
Is this happening really frequently or?
Yeah, there's a lot of medical equipment, I mean, the most glorious part was that there was a toilet there for the past week and a half, but before.
Oh, I saw that, yeah, there was a cabot right in the front of the building.
Yeah. Right, but I mean, there, there is often wheelchairs and medical equipment and walkers.
Maybe just a sign as to where they need to go.
Well, Holly's put up signs down solid that's saying that you do not dump things outside of her door unless you make an appointment to arrange for stuff.
Or is it other things?
Yeah.
So that people can look it over before we take in stuff that we end up junking anyhow.
Or maybe that the, it, right.
So I think that they're working on a policy. I'm talking about the common areas because so people can get in and out of doors with a wheelchair without knocking over donated medical equipment. I thought, I thought the cabot was pretty bad, but.
Well, yeah, that's the trouble, on the weekend, you can only get in the front door unless you have a little key fob or you come in within a certain time.
No, but they're dumping it in the lobby, li- they're not getting into the building, the.
Maybe.
Right, it is right there.
Maybe it is just putting Holly's hours up and saying, please do not.
You think that will help?
Drop equipment outside of, probably not, but we can at least point to the policy if.
It's like the code of conduct.
What's that?
It's probably as effective as anybody who wants to read the sign.
Well, yeah.
You know? And I don't think there's any teeth in it saying, don't, or else this will happen, but.
Yeah.
People, see enough people doing it without there being a sign saying, don't do it, and people think that that is the thing to do, is to just make their donations of medical equipment right in the lobby.
It's just to leave it.
Yeah, so just something that says, please only drop medical equipment off during these hours. Maybe, maybe take the sign that Holly has downstairs and put it up on the.
And put it up, so there's a phone number and there's hours for people to call.
Yeah.
You think that will be helpful?
We'll try it, try it and see what happens.
Give it a shot, see what happens, and if it's a, still a problem, then we'll talk about it again.
It won't. Be harmful, so.
That's right.
No, well.
Try it.
Okay. All right. Sounds good.
Who's putting the sign up?
Holly already made one, so.
No, I'm saying the sign over here, so we'll just copy and put it in the front of the building, okay?
Yep, yep, I'll ask her for it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, so Mary, you added the Town Council consult regarding Sears bankruptcy filing?
Oh, that's, yeah, well, when I sent that out today, I asked if you thought that that needed to go, Dennis asked if that should go to Town Council.
Oh, I know, and I didn't know what to say, so I didn't answer probably.
And Buzz, and Buzz was, responded that he thought it should, but.
Yes.
You know, if you think it should go to Town Council.
Is it?
What to do what?
Kinda like with Son Edison, you know, we never really filed an answer, we're trying to negotiate with them outside of court. This is again, New York, bankruptcy court.
Hmm.
Um, does Copman and Page already represent or did, have they already lumped people together? There's Sears all throughout the state.
Right.
Uh, have they found outside council to help?
How about just inquiring to see whether.
What guidance they can provide on it.
Yeah, right, because of this.
Do you want me to do that?
Yeah, I mean, is that okay with you, you two?
That's fine.
Okay.
I think he said it's two hundred thousand dollars a year in total in taxes from Sears, so he thought it was worth investing the time.
Right.
With Town Council to see what they could advise on that.
Okay, might just wanna send them the information and.
Yep.
Ask for a little guidance. All right. Okay, I believe I sent you an email uh concerning my phone call with Ornella Quinn. Um, did you guys get a chance to read it?
I did.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, I told her I would ask you this evening for your feedback as far as having her come to a selectmen's meeting and have a conversation.
Um, I, I guess my feeling based on the email is that, that this isn't really our issue per se. Um, if she's got questions about the proceedings, that would go to the moderator. If she's got questions about the articles, that would go to planning, so I'm not sure what it accomplishes to have Ornella come in.
I did actually te- tell her that I thought maybe she needed to go to planning. Um. I, I, I don't know whether it was she didn't want to or, um.
Well, I mean, here's my question, where, you know, people just wanna be heard. What are you talking about? Is it ten percent of the town wanna be heard, ten percent of the registered voters wanna be heard, ten percent of the people that were there on Monday wanna be heard, is it ten? I mean, so when you just say people wanna be heard, it's kinda hard to quantify.
Yes, it is.
You know, and I mean, and the vote was pretty resounding on her items. I mean, that came down with just a clear no, and even on the first part of the, uh, the bylaws.
Right.
And I just don't think jurisdictionally, this is under the jurisdiction of the planning board.
That's what I said.
And like I said, anything procedural, if, if they're concerned about the vote, then that's under Barry's jurisdiction.
Right.
None of this is under our jurisdiction.
No, we just put it on the warrant.
Unless I'm missing something, yeah.
Unless they're asking, unless they're asking uh eventually to have another special town meeting, then it would be under our jurisdiction, I assume. Um, but I, I wanted to share the information with you.
Well. Yeah, yeah.
Um.
Yeah, I, I agree with Lisa, I, I don't think that this is us.
It may, you know, I can ask her to get in touch with Barry or get in touch with planning board as a suggestion.
Right.
If you'd like me to. If you'd like me to.
Yeah, and like I said, it's not that I I I'm trying to be unhelpful, it's just I don't think we can help with the problems that she's indicating.
And that's kinda how I felt too, was that I didn't know how we could help. At least, I mean, usually people wanna be heard, but they also want, they have something in mind that they want
Correct.
um, to accomplish.
Yeah, I mean, people just wanna be heard.
In general. Is that what you're saying?
Well, yeah, I mean, but it's it is, you know, again, to Lisa's point, it's like, well, what's the goal?
Right.
Why do you wanna be heard if you're just gonna come and sit and kinda rehash all the stuff? And you're upset because items didn't pass.
I even suggested to her that.
Voted how we wanted to vote, and it was the majority of the folks on that side of the table that determined the outcome, it wasn't us.
Right, right, no, no.
Alright.
So I can pass along the information, I did actually say to her that if she had, um, certain people that were really upset about something in particular, that it might be a good idea for them to come forward rather than herself, so that it didn't look like, you know, being a poor sport.
Yes.
And she agreed, she thought that that would be really nice, cause I think she's actually, you know, exhausted from the whole ordeal too. So I can pass on that feedback if you'd like.
Okay, yes, please.
Alrighty. Alright, um, so we we had the MSA conference update, um. Lisa, do you wanna go over any thing that you have, I mean, I don't have it in front of me, but, um.
I I guess, I a couple of things, um, I think particularly given how green our board is right now, it might be worth it for one or more of us to go to the MMA annual meeting, um, because there's a lot of information there. Um, there was a legislative update, the the extra budgetary funds, I had mentioned the CPA matching funds, but there's also um, we'll get twenty percent extra on our chapter ninety money, which is very nice. Um, there's a ten million dollar water pollution abatement trust, I'm not sure if we, that doesn't sound like something that would be pertaining to us necessarily. Um, but there were also fifteen million put towards behavioral and public safety school grants. Um, MMA is backing a couple of things that it didn't sound like were coming to fruition quickly, um, but there's something, um, possibly in the pipeline about changing the housing zoning, um, threshold at, or changing those bylaws from two thirds to a majority. Just to sort of preclude having the state put something in place that automatically overrules local zoning. They've also been pushing for a short term rental legislation and reaction to Airbnb and those types of things. Um, there was a board member forum, there were was a lot of back and forth discussion, one of the things that um, sort of struck me was they actually have their committees come in, um, to do a meeting once a year to do a recap and discuss their priorities. So that everybody's sort of kept in the loop, but it's the the committees that actually lead the discussion on that, so that everybody knows what's going on. Um, there was also, I sat in on a, um, a forum on hiring your next town administrator, um, which was, uh, you know, really good information, it was Bernie Lynch, who is, was a TA in Chelmsford and now owns Paradigm, which is one of the consulting firms. And the TA from Danvers and the TA from Wellesley, both who had been through the hiring process not too long ago. Um, and ironically, they were both assistant town managers in Avon. Um, so they kind of raise up and send out into the world a lot of their assistants. Um, but there was a lot of stuff, I don't know if you had any specific questions, but there were a lot of things to sort of think about during that process. Um, and it was a good, a good forum.
So on that, cause there is quite a few, I started to read through this at work, don't tell my boss, um. Well, hmm, sometimes, do, oh.
I'm sure he goes and watches.
Yeah, yeah, she does, she shakes the back of my chair, um. So with a lot of the information in here about the the town administrator, do you think that this might help cut down on the amount that we were asking in the recruitment process, that we have? We we have a little bit more information, we're a little bit more educated?
The actual, um, town management study committee felt that we could do less because we'd already done a lot of homework. Um, Bernie Lynch actually had been following our process, and he said our town management study committee had done a fabulous job. Um, so he he extended his compliments on that, um, but the number that he threw out was ten to twelve thousand, so. Um, and that was just his sort of ballpark number, it wasn't based on our situation or anything, it was somebody asked.
Ish, okay.
So, we always thought it would be less than that, we just felt we should have sort of a cap, so we didn't have to go back and ask. Um, but they said they do a lot of sort of à la carte sort of stuff, and it really depends on which aspects we decide to use and which firm we decide to use and how they sort of break things out. Um, they suggested that we either us or the screening committee, you know, get proposals from multiple firms and sort of look at, um, they did say that we don't necessarily have to take the cheapest one though, because you can do a request for proposal for the best fit. Now, I don't know much about procurement, so, but this was actually the TA talking about this, so you don't actually have to take, you can take the one that seems to fit your needs the best.
Even if it's over ten thousand, is that the, is that the cutoff, ten thousand?
You go, um, there's different thresholds, you take, you need three written, um, quotes for between ten to fifty thousand, but over fifty thousand, you could do the, um, request for proposals where you actually have a list of criteria, not just the lowest price.
Oh, better not be over fifty.
It's not.
And that's what she was talking about, I think, was, um, because she said, you know, the cheapest one isn't always the best fit for your town.
Right.
And you really want, you want the best firm for your town, um. There was a lot of talk of of really getting the best match on both sides, the the TA is looking for a town where they're gonna fit.
Mm-hmm.
And you obviously want a good fit on this end too, so.
Very similar to looking for a superintendent of schools.
E- exactly, actually. Um, and they actually recommended, uh, like multiple people in the audience had done this, and multiple people actually recommended that the school superintendent be one of the people on your screening committee.
Okay, I think at some point we will have to put this on the agenda as far as the to dos.
Yeah, I would like, you know.
Next to dos.
Sooner rather than later, whether it's putting the screening committee together or starting to get proposals in some way from the, um, thing, I think. He felt as long as we started the process by like February, we should be good. But that means getting a screening committee and stuff together relatively quickly and getting that firm in place.
Yeah, we need to put steps together, what steps need to be taken. Um, okay. So KP Law's gonna send over a social media policy?
Well, the, um, if you go on their website, there is a sort of fill in the blank, which I sent over to the, um, IT committee, but they were supposed to send over the whole presentation.
Oh.
Um, which I haven't seen yet, but. Yeah, and that had all the links and stuff, but if you go on KP Law, they do have a little bit of stuff.
We did get a book from Amy also, didn't we? Was there anything in that? Maybe there is.
On social media policy, I'm not sure.
I'm not sure. Been a while since I looked at it.
But yeah, the IT committee is working diligently on that right now, so hopefully there will be something shortly.
Okay. Mary, did you have anything to add to?
No, I I wrote it all in my report.
I I didn't get a chance to read it, but I will.
Oh, oh, okay.
But I mean, you don't have to.
Uh, there was two rooms, so Lisa went to the room for the hiring a town administrator, and I went to one that was best practices for small towns. And they were just warning about spiking salaries for town administrators and town administrators, uh, man- managers. So they were all, just just warning people to keep in mind to what you really need for a small community and don't shoot for too much, because, um, the price would follow accordingly.
Hmm.
And, um, they also talked about the idea of in addition to the all boards meeting where you have all boards get together and talk about your priorities for the year, which was said in an open session, there, um, Carlisle's town administrator talked about the idea of having regular offline meetings with the chair of the FinCom, the chair of the selectmen and the chair of the school committee in that town, and himself as the town administrator to talk about budget direction. Especially around, um, the the key times like pre-budget, pre-town meeting. Um, and then they also advocated for having a finance or financial board meeting, which I don't think this th- there are financial people do that, but the accountant, the treasurer, the assessor and the finance committee, pre-budget, pre-town meeting and around the time of setting the tax rate. There's a lot of communication, maybe they are doing it around the time of the tax rate, cause they all have to put stuff into the gateway system at the same time. But actually, like, meeting to get, swimming in the same direction. And you you only now have control over the, soon the treasurer, but the collector, so maybe you could try to suggest that there be more, um, meetings over this. And, um, they also kinda talked about the idea of liaison or not liaison. And in some cases, they say their town administrator is the liaison, and in some cases, it's selectmen in key roles.
Mm-hmm.
But that communication's key in whichever way you're going with, um, liaison or town administrator, they expect reports from the town administrator, or in the alternative, if it's, um, selectmen, they expect reports on that. Um, then they talked about the idea of regionalizing or shared services between towns, if you're gonna do it, make sure there's a written contract that spells out all of the costs and expenses and insurance burdens and everything like that. But also, um, whether it's really shortchanging you to go with a f- a part-time model when your town might be exposed to risk and cost, and it may be just as well to go with the full-time model, so they're just bouncing off one another. But half of the people in that room were from communities who are under five thousand of population, so it was kind of a useful discussion to have. Um, actually, someone started talking from Winchester and they just shut him right down, they didn't wanna hear from him. The the hands went up that everyone in the room was more focused on smaller community concerns. And there's also something called the Rural Policy Advisory Commission, which is new. So instead of all of us being subject to our regional planning councils, which, you know, maybe pay more attention to larger communities and possibly less to smaller communities, this new law is gonna, uh, pay attention to communities that have five hundred people or per square mile or less. So I I gave you a listing of all the local towns that would fit, Berlin, Bolton, Ludenberg, Harvard, Lancaster, Boylston, Townsend. But not communities like Air, Clinton, Marlboro, Hudson, Northborough. So it's this new emphasis to really foco- focus on rural and fringe rural communities. And so that's something that they said pay attention for listening sessions when that comes out in November and December. Those would be important to hit. For the CMR PC, Trish Settles is the local designated.
It's actually come through already.
Yeah, I did see that email.
November first, I believe, is the listening session.
Yeah.
So that's a good one for someone to try to attend.
Mm-hmm. Okay, well, thanks, Mary. Um.
Thank you for letting me go.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, it's nice because you hone in on stuff, Lisa hones in on stuff. There's items that you went to, there's items that she went to, so you get a balance of, uh, split. Thank you for both going.
Yours?
Yeah, yeah, it's in my packet.
Okay. Um, so, we're down to other new business? Old business?
Old business, honey.
Wow, she just called you old, Tim, just didn't know, like, if you, didn't know if you caught that or not.
We have, uh, she's older than me.
I am, actually.
We have three items regarding street lamps that, um, is going to be on your guys' plate for decision, first which is, uh, per our agreement with MAPC, we were required to hire a lighting consultant. At our last meeting, we chose Light Smart, um, they were the low price, you have the information in your inbox as far as the pricing in there, it's about twelve hundred dollars. That would come from the funds that were allocated to us at town meeting. Um, what I need from you is for us to sign the subscription form that allows us to be a party to the MAPC contract. So that would be something that you would have to do as, um, as the governing body. Uh, second piece of that is that we have also had successful meetings with Boyleston's, uh, power department. Uh, they are receptive to doing our maintenance for that, um, and they.
Maintenance for?
Maintenance for the street lamps, cause we will own these, so, you know, anything that goes as. They provided a contract that was actually negotiated by Light Smart, but it's between the Thomas Spencer and Paxton. Um, I read the article, um, our board has has read the contract, it's very straightforward, um. So I would, uh, request a legal review of that document, allow us to make draft changes and to enter into, um, negotiations with Boyleston to do that. The rate that they quoted us, I believe, was two hundred and twelve dollars an hour, that's for a two-man bucket truck that is certified to work on the power lines, that is very comparable. In fact, it was two dollars more than Spencer got like three or four years ago, so, um, it's definitely in keeping. Um, I talked to David Smith, he attended the meeting with me, he, that is by definitely his preferred solution. And that matches what MAPC told us as well, is that for communities of our size, uh, the best singular, the best solution is to go with a partner municipal agency, if you have one near us, unfortunately, we have two. Uh, Hudson refused, they said they they're not interested in in partaking, so we closed that door. So we have an open one with Boyleston, uh, we've met with Mark Barackian twice, um, once formally and once informally. So we're ready to go with that contract, he gave us that paper, so he's confident with us, I don't expect to be, um, too much negotiations. It's very minimal, very straightforward, it has, you know, not a lot of controversy associated with this, you pay us this, we do that. Um, as far as sparing and, uh, how to handle replacements, what they recommended is that there is an industrial lighting, uh, industrial electrical supply just up the road from them. Uh, they recommended that we would just establish an account for them, establish a minimum number of spares, and then they, uh, tell us what they use and we replenish it. Uh, based on the one year after they completed their street lamps, they've had no maintenance calls in the first full year. Um, they had one that they had to go fix immediately following, so these are highly reliable units, that's part of what we're paying for. So the the going forward costs should not be, um, substantial drain. We are saving about seven thousand dollars a year by going to this, so we believe we have ongoing savings that would offset any of the potential maintenance costs. The third piece has to do with the insurance, now there's, I've seen two different things, um. The fundamental problem we have here is, I think all of us have been out of the loop with the negotiations that have taken place between Maya and National Grid. Um, actually, I think MAPC has been a little bit out of the loop on this. Uh, part of the reason in my email I said five million, cause that was the information I got from Adrian at National Grid, so she was out of the loop on what was actually being negotiated. Uh, I do believe Mary is correct, that the, um, the negotiated rate is going to be a four million dollar, uh, overall liability required for this. Uh, that would be a million dollars more than we have, and that's about a little over a thousand dollars per annual, per year. Um, that we would have to absorb as a result of doing this project, so that would take some of our profits, so to speak, our return. And, um, it would slate it to insurance. There is no room for negotiation on this, for, at my level, um. We have been completely and thoroughly shut down, that, uh, I can't escalate through MAPC, I can't escalate through National Grid. And, um, Maya has said this is the way we're treating. So at this point, um, I've exhausted my ability to do anything further, um, on that aspect. If you choose to accept that, um, National Grid has already been in contact with Maya to, uh, issue revised closing documents as well as a certificate of insurance. So, those are the three areas that we're at, once this is complete, um, we've been working with Light Smart already, George is actually ready to go with the survey. It's possible that we can actually make up the time that we've lost with our agreement with MAPC, because we have so few lights. We do have, I think it's forty-two hundred dollars in rebates already reserved from National Grid with our name on it, we just need to complete it. Um, as far as MAPC's grant, that was about thirty-two hundred dollars, that is time sensitive, so we have to complete that by the end of the year. We do have still a strong chance of doing that, uh, if we. We do have still a strong chance of doing that, uh if we if we move quickly. So once Light Smart is on, um they can turn that around quickly. Then we go into the next phase, which is uh procurement. He'll issue a report on what he recommends for the town. Probably the biggest decision we'll have to make is the color of the lighting, so you may be familiar with, you know, some of the differences. Uh the public tends to want a warmer light and public safety tends to want a cooler light because of visibility issues. Usually there there's. Best practices allow you to kinda s- go down the middle there, so. Um these would be full cutoff lighting. We've already put that in. That's actually also a requirement, so um that's something that we received feedback from the public on as well, that they wish to have a. Um lighting that that would be in character with the rural community and not spray light pollution everywhere. At that point, um we secure the contract with Boylston, we secure the contract with Light Smart. We move into construction and at that point, it's pretty much out of the town's hands until the the process is done. Um. Expectation is there's sixty-nine lights to complete. They can do it maybe two weeks. That's what they're telling us. This is not a big job for them. Last stage of the project, we under the contract that uh in closing documents we signed, we do not have the right to energize these lights. National Grid has to come back. So that is a potential area of.
Cost.
Of, well, it could be cost, um and it could be d- in delay. Um.
Delay.
The documents specify that the the demarcation of ownership is the fusing that we have to put in. Um we already had that fusing in our budget and uh George took an initial view of our. Of our project plan and said that yes, it does make sense. It does hold together. The information that we have from M A P C was accurate. And that based on what he's seeing right now, we should be able to do this within our allocated budget before we have to worry about even the. Before the rebates kick in. So we're, everything that we're saying. We get the insurance done, we sign the contract with Light Smart, we sign the contract with Boylston. That's all the roadblocks. We're ready to go into construction.
So can I ask a really silly question?
Mm-hmm.
Where are all these lights?
They're all over the place. Um.
There are actually more than that. There are private ones.
There are, well, actually, there are private ones. Um.
Mm-hmm.
To answer your question, they're in small clusters throughout the town. Um.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sixty-nine lights and even a town the size of Berlin can be pretty few in part between, so it's not.
Yeah, so what, like the center of town?
You you're pleasant, so um you know, somewhere even Peach Hill has um Gates Pond has some. Gates Pond is actually has a number of the private lights that. We have no control over, but.
Interesting.
Part of what's.
Never noticed.
Well, you'll pro- one of the things that they're, actually, a large part of what we're paying for from the lighting consultant is for them to go around and geolocate every single one of them.
Okay.
Um that's one of the requirements of of M A P C, so they wanna make sure, one, that we know where they are, so we can maintain them.
Yeah.
Two, that we're actually buying what National Grid said they're selling to us, which is the other piece. So if we do find a conflict or that, we can go back and. Ask them for a penny or something. I don't know, cause they sold it to us for a dollar, so.
A dollar and a thousand dollars more of insurance.
Uh yeah, well, exactly.
So, um. It, I d- I saw that I had an email from you this afternoon, but I didn't have a chance to go through it.
Mm-hmm. Pretty much right.
Does it have this all outlined in it?
Yes.
The steps of what needs to happen?
Well, what, it has three points I made today. It has supporting documentation for each one of them.
Uh-huh. Okay.
So attached to the email is a copy of the contract. Uh it has the cost calculator that M A P C gave to us from for the lighting consultant. It has the subscription form, a sample subscription form to join the contract. I have an email out to Kara making sure that that hasn't changed. If it changes, I will certainly forward it as necessary.
Um and you've had, have you had an energy meeting to talk to everybody about this and the steps and they're still in support of this?
Yeah. Uh yeah, we've talked about this at every meeting. Uh we had an energy meeting on Tuesday where we voted on both of these.
Okay.
We voted both Light Smart and to enter into the contract with Boylston.
Okay, and where there's money needed, you ha- have, were you able to suggest like where the money's coming from?
Well, we're under the impression that it's from our town meeting grant that we received, or article that was twenty thousand dollars.
We have a grant article.
Okay. Right, okay. I think uh. I mean, it's 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 a good thing that you're organized enough and I feel like you can head this up. And let us know what we need to do.
Okay.
Which you just.
Yeah.
Kinda did.
Well, I I don't have the authority to make any of these decisions, so I have to put them in front of you.
Right, right.
We need to approve Maya issuing this certificate and upping the insurance.
If we're going to do that, yep.
We're going to do that. And we need to sign the contracts.
Yep.
Because the energy can.
And I need, um, we can. I I need legal review. That's one of the things. If you want that contract reviewed, but you have to grant permission for that as well.
Right. Well, I think generally if there's a contract to be signed, we usually do have legal review it.
Either way, I think it's clear I can't initiate that.
Okay. Okay, so um seeing as how this is, it is old business.
Yeah, well, as I said, we've been, this has been going on for.
Um. I, and I, I know next week is a busy agenda. Um I don't know if we can squeeze it in, but.
Do you?
Yeah. It's either that or it might be the following. Which is what, November?
Yeah.
If.
Do we want to give him permission to?
Fifth.
The the light.
Get that to legal or get the document that needs to get to legal to Mary so it can go to legal or?
The the one I need the most is the subscription form to M A P C to hire the the lighting con- contractor. That is my sh- that is my.
Mm.
Uh gating item right now. I can't do anything without that, the other part of it from a from a construction standpoint. And we don't own these lights until we agree with Maya, so I can go forward at risk with the lighting contractor and spend money to to map all these things. With the impression that we eventually will own them, but that's a, you know, if you wanna do this linearly, we have to do the contract first. And then do the lighting, but that will jeopardize our ability to bring this in by the the end of the year. So I'd like to run these in parallel.
Uh I want a chance to look at your email and be able to look, I I I I'm better visually when I read things.
Mm-hmm.
Um to understand the whole entire thing. Um.
No, so no, the the, I mean, I know that we're meeting Saturday to do reviews, so.
Oh, that's right.
We can do that.
I mean, I'm thinking they give us a couple days to read through them and then if we have any questions.
And you have a chance to look at that. Right.
You know, then maybe it's just a back to Tim and then on Monday, we're good.
But my impression with the with the contract is if you decide that you're willing to go with the elevated insurance amount.
Okay.
A closing revised, the closing document is already ready. Maya's already informed. They'll just do that and it'll come back to you yet again to sign the revised contract and then it's done.
When?
I've already signed this contract three times.
At four million dollars, I believe, so.
Right, we we um, I forgot, I lost my train of thought now. Um. When, I guess, when would this begin where you're you're putting out money? Would this be after the first year? Would this be after the town meeting?
No, it it would be.
Immediate.
It'd be immediate.
Okay, so we d- we, I mean, my concern is where's the money coming from, so that's, you know. It's all good and fine to approve things, but just wanna make sure we know where it's coming from.
Are you referring to the thousand dollars for the insurance?
Any, any of it.
Well, we had a town meeting article.
That, and it had, how much in it? Remind me. Okay, so it would be coming out of that?
Twenty thousand.
Was it twenty dollars?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. I just didn't know if you were.
So the budget that we had in the initial project was sixteen thousand dollars. We had four thousand dollars of overhead that we purposely put in there to for contingencies.
Mm-hmm.
On that sixteen thousand dollars, we expect to receive almost sev- seventy-five hundred dollars in rebates at the completion of the project. So the net cost to taxpayers, if we deliver everything, is gonna be a return of ten thousand, nine thousand dollars. So when you factor in a seven thousand dollar per year savings, the return on investment this for this particular project is very good.
Yes.
Even at a worst case scenario, you're you're well under four years, which is pretty good at a municipal.
Right, it's it's just a concern of can you take the money from the places, I mean, where you're saving it? If you need to. No, maybe not. And that's all, that's like a June question.
Yeah, but I think.
Um, but if you can take it from that article, then it's probably not an issue.
The article was written to support the project. I would say this is at least in the first year with the project associated costs.
Okay. Okay, cause that's important, how the article's written. Did you have any questions?
It was written broadly, for this very reason.
No, I just gotta go through everything. No, I'm sorry. No, I just gotta go through Tim's email. I mean, it it sounds pretty.
Me too.
Pretty clear. I mean, it's sad about the surprise on your insurance.
Well, my ear tip with it was it felt very much like a for-profit company was negotiating with another for-profit country company. On behalf of the taxpayers without us having a voice at the table, and I I thought that was wrong.
Any insurance company. We do have money to pay it. And sh- and added a thousand dollars for insurance to go to four million dollars for the coverage, but there was all kind of exotic coverages that Maya didn't provide. Is that not?
They negotiated those things out, I believe.
Okay, okay, okay.
I specifically.
That Maya and and National Grid had been going back unbeknownst to all of us.
Any matter.
Okay.
I specifically asked the question.
Um and I pinged out the other day and after he got something from Adrian, I think it was saying. Hey, this is back in Maya's court, so I pinged Susan and said. What's going on? And that's when she sent that back.
So sad, too bad.
Susan.
No deal.
No deal.
I I I specifically asked.
Susan definitely isn't really part of this, is she?
I specifically asked the question um whether or not we could purchase a rider.
No, I.
Specific to street lamps over and above, because the odds of us in my non-insurance, but but what are the odds that we're really gonna have a liability claim because of. Sixty-nine street lamps across the the community. It's pretty low. The cost should be pretty low. That was denied. They said no.
It is what it is.
It is what it is. And that's that's where we came to a halt. Um there was, there was no further negotiation.
Yeah.
So uh just a question, is it five million for every community? No matter what your size is?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, well, we're we're going back and forth.
This is what Maya and National Grid negotiated.
Yes, okay.
Well, it was five million. Um we have some uncertainty on whether it's now five or four.
Well, Adrian said five, right, and Maya said four?
Adrian, National Grid said five, Maya said four. I tend to believe Maya over Adrian, but this is why I can't give you a hundred percent certainty.
Okay.
If you don't have five million dollars worth of coverage and they require it, the town's exposed for the remaining million.
But National Grid and Maya have been negotiating the the price. Adrian was just outside of this conversation.
Down the four. Oh, we've been outside of the selectman's office, hasn't been.
Yes, exactly, yes.
Yeah, we all have.
Everybody has.
But what was happening when I said, Susan, what's going on? She said, oh, we're ready to issue the new certificate based on what National Grid is now requiring.
Okay.
So they know what's going on. She gave us an appropriate quote as her knows, so.
You can, you can see it right in the thread that I forwarded you. She was coming to me asking for authority to issue this certificate.
Yeah, like, yeah, no, sorry.
I can't do that, so that's why I'm here tonight.
Okay, well, we can add that to our agenda on Saturday as a quick discussion.
Okay.
Maybe they wanna invoice us for that.
What's that?
The thousand.
Yeah, I'm sure.
So that they can issue the certificate. They're not gonna issue unless we pay it.
Right, well, I th- I just want a chance to look at the information, um.
So I'll just add that to, I'll add it to Sunday.
Yeah, just add it to Saturday and figure it out on Saturday. Um, where are we?
Old business, new business.
Old business, other business, uh selectmen liaison uh stuff. Um. See where my stuff is. I did that, I did that. Um I did finally get an answer from John Kudair from Northborough. That the documents that he sent us are public documents and therefore we could do what we wish with them. Um I don't know whether you all wanna put it up on a our town website or maybe just let individuals know.
Do they have it on their website? We could just link to their website.
We, I didn't see it there. I.
If they're not linking, not putting it up, why would you put it up?
I just. The it it is, I mean, the press has it, he said.
Thank you, Tim.
Um the individuals who are um, you know, involved in the whole thing ha- have seen this, the document. I mean, we've had. I'm sure probably um Mrs. Chandler has seen it. Um I don't know whether the other individual who was emailing us has seen it.
If it's a public document, someone could put it up on Berlin Neighbors Connect and not put it on the town's website.
True.
Right.
I mean, it's, it just is a, yeah. Is anybody interested in doing that, or?
I can give it a shot. Send it my way. Stinky Farm.
Okay.
Well, I mean, I mean, Mrs. Chandler did come, because other people have come to us.
Yes.
Kinda like with the letter back to the folks who helped clean up the town, just uh, don't comment, shut the comment section off. Just wanted an update. Here we are for Stinky Farm.
Right.
Or, because I mean, everybody in town knows, you smell it, regu- you smell it outside.
Yeah.
When we leave, so. Doesn't matter. So yeah, Mary, if you could whiz that stuff over, I'll come up with something and then put something out on Burler's, Berlin Connect.
Okay, um. I was wondering whether you both would um support sending a thank you letter to the Town Management Study Committee? And also to um the Highway, um. Town Management Study Committee, of course, for the doing the hard work that they did. I mean, I just sent them an email myself, but I think maybe it'd be nice if we sent them letters. And the other thing was for the open house, I think Dave and his crew did a great job on Friday and Saturday.
Mm-hmm.
Um just so that the Highway employees know that we really appreciate it. Um the fact that they, you know, spent Friday and I I they believed Jim Spinney was even there on Saturday.
He was there on Saturday, yep, when I was there.
Yeah. So, um.
And can we get a letter to all the businesses that donated as well?
I don't know if Dave is doing that.
Okay. I just don't wanna leave them. Oh, yeah.
If you'd like it to come from the selectmen, I can ask Dave to give me a list.
I I think it should come from Highway since they asked. If he's got it.
Okay.
Or ask if he needs any help. Drafting a letter or anything. Um we, Mary and I met with um Luke from the Darnell School. Um which has uh. Students with disabilities, autism. Um they're trying to find them wor- uh jobs that they can do. That um uh will provide them skills for the future. Um and Mary did a great job of networking and letting him know all the different places in the area. Um should've seen how fast he could scribble. Um and I guess I'm asking you whether you think that we should put something out to the town departments and ask whether. There is anything that they can think of that 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 the students could do within our building, within our town. Um that we would be responsible for.
I do. It's a great opportunity. You give back for no other reason than you can.
Yeah, I mean, they do stuffing envelopes. Uh I mean, the list, you know, was was quite long.
Mm-hmm.
Um. And um so I just.
They're all one-on-one supervised.
Right.
Um they're ages fifteen to twenty-two.
Really? Is this from the Autism Behavioral Center at the Rotary?
No, no, this is the Darnell School.
It's from the Darnell School, which is on, the only way I c- I forget, is it South Street in Hudson where? There's the Worship Pub and it's across the street.
Oh.
In one of the buildings there.
Okay.
Um. But, you know, it it it, I think it would be a great opportunity for students. Um.
Absolutely.
And if we can find them something here or even in the area. I understand that Luke did stop by Mini Hands and they said, sure.
Oh, good.
You know, students would be very welcome, you know, to help out. Like once a week or whatever.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Yeah. So I just wanted to run it by you before Mary sent out something to the t- the different departments.
Yep.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Um. I received an email from George Nastless at, Nastless, is that how you say it?
Nastless, I think.
Nastless. From Weston and Sampson, who does our, keeps track of the um the dirt that's going to Maplewood Farms. Um and.
I saw that.
Mm, and he and D E P, S- Weston and Sampson and D E P. Um we're going to have a meeting up at Maplewood, I believe, sometime next week. And uh it just needs to be confirmed. And I said that I would go. And then I can fill you in on, you know. What what the whole. And then I can fill you in on, you know, what what the whole ordeal is about. Um I was un- with the understanding that the A C O was already happening.
I thought we already did that, but I I.
But maybe it's a like a a check at some point with the E P and Weston and Sampson. Um cause I uh.
Since they're into that, he's sent over with the town, they should be providing some report back to the town, but there hasn't been any any follow-up.
Sounds like it had to do with the A C O. No, I haven't seen anything.
I wonder if they would meet with you a little bit beforehand, just so that you could ask the questions that you have.
Yeah, yeah, I might be able to do that, when they confirm, I can let them know, confirm the day and time.
Yeah, even fifteen, twenty minutes would be handy.
I know.
Okay.
It's helpful.
Sounds good, I believe. That was it, I think the Maya um meeting that was supposed to happen tomorrow is canceled because we are waiting for Dennis to bring us. Um consultants, which is next Monday.
The Insurance Advisory Committee.
Right, right, it was an, yeah, it was the Insurance Advisory Committee and Maya or or uh. She co- she's not really Maya, she's from Cabot Risk, I believe, is that right? I think so, Maya.
So that's, well, that's how the people from Maya sign actually is Cabot Risk, so they must be under, Maya must farm out.
Yes, yes. Yes. So, all right, um we do have need for a quick executive session. To consider, under Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty One A Six, to consider the purchase exchange lease or value of real property. If the charity clears an open meeting, will have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. Um at fifty eighth South Street, River Road West, Highway Barn.
Before we do that, I have a couple. I'll make them quick.
Oh, all right, I'm sorry.
That's all right, I know I'm at the end of the table.
All right, well, I made that motion now, and you know what, the per- next person can say, so moved, cause I'm not reading it again.
Okay, all right, um so I just, I was going through email and just wanted to check. So the the email that came through in regard to the agricultural growing, um does it restrict farmers? Are we sure that the planning board is gonna address that?
I think the agricultural.
Yes.
Commission guy was gonna.
All right.
Either way, that's not us.
Okay, all right, good. Uh and I hate emails that come to like fifteen people and you never know.
Yeah. Right.
So I just always like to ask, um so this sparked a comment or thought, this like you can all see it about the Twitter, Facebook. And Insta, oh my gosh, is social platforms.
Mm-hmm.
Um so I know a couple of months ago or whenever it was that we had talked about um not reposting. Political thing, you know, like Senator Tran or whatever, that we weren't gonna repost that, so how do we feel about this? I, like, as a vote comes up on the town um for the C P A. Do we make comments, not make comments? If we make comments, do we have to specifically say, I pick stone private citizen, I'm not speaking for the board?
That is sort of exactly, and we have to be very careful about not um not doing this in a quorum situation, if that makes sense. We cannot, we have to be really careful about not deliberating on any posts or.
Correct.
Right.
All right.
So.
All right, yeah, cause I just, I I just don't want someone to think, oh, the board must be supportive or the board really hates.
Right.
And for us to be like, I wasn't me, you know, type of thing, all right, well, no, just checking.
Right.
Yeah, and you're, I mean, you are welcome to have personal opinions, just the board hasn't voted one way or the other, so.
Right.
Um and we can't, we can't all like chime in on the same thing and like if you're up there and say something, I can't say, oh, I completely agree and it, you know.
We just have to say. Because that's deliberation.
Because that's deliberation.
Even a little likey thing is deliberation.
Right.
Exactly.
Right.
All right.
Um and I was hoping that she would send over that thing, cause she went into like excruciating detail on that aspect of of social media.
Okay, all right, uh another one that we went through was the Mass Community uh.
Compact.
Thank you, I T grant, um I know that we had talked about this one.
We can't do that again.
Well, it's just like grants in general, that are we making sure that we're kinda keeping track of grants that come in and that we're responding to them? I know we've lost a couple of them, because again, we did this, so I just wanna make sure that someone's on point, that we're not. Groups aren't waiting for either the town administrator to come in, just that if we have an advantage to to get money into the town, I just wanna make sure that we.
Get on it, yeah.
Aren't taking advantage of it.
Yeah, the I T grant actually, like I said, um we got that this year, so we can't apply for it again until this other year.
Right. Yeah, but it was just the grant, it was like, ooh.
There is, there is no one person other than, I don't know, June, who's tracking.
Who knows the grants, okay.
Uh yeah, in out on Community Compact.
Right, and it didn't have to be that one, it was just the word grant that went ping, that I wanted to make sure we were paying attention to.
That'd be general all of them.
Um and then my last one and then.
Gotta task somebody with that maybe because.
Yeah, last one, whatever, then I'll say whatever you want me to say. So a suggestion, and I don't know how you two ladies feel about it, um. I understand people can come to the meeting and as you can see, it's a packed house.
Well.
I know.
Uh it was earlier.
It was earlier, um and I understand that people can read minutes and read our agendas. How would you feel about having like coffee with the select women night? We don't vote, we don't deliberate. We just give an opportunity to people and not come here, get get rid of this barrier between us and that side. Have it at eighteen seventy, have it at nineteen Carter.
We can actually do that, we just need to post it.
Okay.
Um they did actually talk a little, who talked, somebody talked about that, do you remember that? That was in the selectmen back and forth, they actually do something like that, right?
It was, it's the all the selectmen. Yep, yep, they do.
But it was okay.
Okay.
And was and it was very.
They also took out rookie selectmen for a beer and something to eat, but they posted it as as a meeting at a restaurant, which you generally know never attends.
No, I mean, cause the thought is we have our to-do list that's cranking, we have the initiatives that are out and running.
Okay.
It would be nice not to get a closet at the dump or the general store or Red Barn Coffee. And to have a forum where people can come and be like, hey, you know what, I've been thinking about, and then we just write it down, okay, next, next, next. So I can check with Evvy and or Leanne, I mean, it might be nice to maybe have two. Uh one at eighteen seventy to showcase the new.
Yeah.
The new improvement and then one at nineteen Carter, which is a little bit more cozy.
You can sit in the cable studio, they can go live and you can take calls.
Yeah, I know. No, okay.
Go Facebook Live during one of these meetings.
Yeah, no, all right, thanks for the opportunity, but no, okay, I know, appreciate that, no.
Just throw it out there.
All right, so I'll check uh with those two ladies and see what they have for dates, I don't know where you're kinda starting to get into holiday season, what they might have.
Right.
Um but I'll with something out there, I just think that would be nice just to have a, one person shows up, no one shows up, then we hang out.
Oh, I bet, I bet, you know.
I think people will come.
Why don't you, why don't you start with one at like nineteen Carter and go from there?
Okay, all right, I'll reach out to Ms. Evvy, all right, I'm done, so what'd you want me to say?
So moved.
So moved.
And then somebody else to say second.
Uh second.
So you're not gonna be returning to open session after?
And we will not be, no, we will not be returning to open session, except to a turn.
Except for tonight.
Why Saki I?
Keifai.
Stone I.
Stone I.
Stone I.